Good morning. We'd like to welcome everybody to the City Council Study Session for November the 9th. We excuse Mr. Thompson and Mr. Whitaker, I'm sorry. There we go, who are not here and I don't believe they're phoning in today.
Mr. Thompson may be doing it later at 8:30.
Okay. Well, we don't have any, either a Thompson or a Whitaker on the phone right now, do we? Okay. So, we look forward to possibly one or both of them joining us later. The first item on our agenda for today is to hear a presentation and discuss an update on the city's digital community engagement campaign, also known as Imagine Mesa, and future implementation strategies. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Council. I'm Julia Thompson, Chief Digital Officer.
It's our time on the executive manager rotation in the city manager's office.
Today, we're going to give you an update on Imagine Mesa. As a reminder, as part of the budget planning, you directed staff to enhance Mesa's digital presence. Imagine Mesa is really a cornerstone of that effort. We launched the campaign June 29th and we ended the idea collection process October 31st. So, Imagine Mesa aimed to engage Mesa residents, businesses, and visitors to share their ideas for shaping Mesa's future. We used digital strategies that compelled engagement by creating a website that was really mobile optimized. We developed a diverse digital communications plan and content that would be appealing to multiple people. And we used data from social media and website interactions to make sure that we were getting representation from the entire community. Here's a little bit about how the campaign did. On the website, we had 67,111 visitors, 10,113 active participants, which means someone who shared an idea, commented on an idea, or me-toed an idea. Me-too was the way that they could support an idea on the website. 465 unique ideas were submitted and staff went to 24 events and presentations. We had our executive manager group that acted as staff ambassadors and so they were out and about in the community to complement our digital efforts with in-person efforts as well. We had 137 social media posts across all of our city's social media channels and those showed up in 238,000 social media feeds. Combined with our digital banner ads campaign, we had a total of 2.9 million total campaign impressions. We just got that number yesterday. So, it's a really staggering number of times that people could have been exposed to the Imagine Mesa campaign. We also gained 4,800 new followers on the main city's social media channel since the kickoff of the campaign. Now, those obviously can't all be attributed directly to Imagine Mesa. 10% can be directly attributed to our paid campaign with Imagine Mesa and the rest, there may be some indirect correlation coupled with our other social media and digital efforts.
Excuse me, Julia.
Sorry, Julia. Quick question back on the former slide. How many followers does the city now have, including almost about 5,000 new followers?
So, we have 14,000 on Facebook. We have about 10,000 on Twitter and we're about to hit 2,000 on Instagram.
And what does that compare to our sister cities around us like Gilbert, Chandler, Queen Greek, Phoenix?
So, Gilbert is, I believe, close to 16,000, as is Phoenix. And so, those two are a little bit higher than we are, but we're doing fairly well in terms of other East Valley cities.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess we should note that since your arrival at the city, we've seen an increase in that. So, thank you for the good job. I think we, maybe we were lagging behind, but we've got...
Julia factor.
Julia factor is having an impact.
Well, thank you, Mayor. It is obviously a team effort. Our marketing and communications office, as well as our marketing specialists across the city, are doing a great job toward that effort as well.
So, Mayor, I think what helps now... We had a lot of good work going on by the departments, but kind of independently each one working in their department and kind of trying to figure out what their strategy was and what Julia's really, I think, helped is we have more of a citywide strategy and what she can really bring to the table is the analytics. And so, you know, sometimes we just didn't know what we didn't know as far as what was working well and which demographic was most likely to respond to different approaches. And so, Julia's really been able to help them kind of understand behind, you know, the pages, what's going on and how to better effectuate connections. And then also just kind of picking up some of the dead wood we had out there where we had a lot of stuff, a lot of Facebook pages or others that just were kind of sitting there idle, maybe is a better right word. And so, that doesn't always leave a very good impression. Either of those things aren't being refreshed. So, all of those things are happening now and we think that we've, and our increase has been in a short period of time. So, we think, to Councilman Glover's question, our momentum will continue to grow as we move forward, so.
So, going to the ImagineMesa.com results, you'll remember that there were five separate categories that we asked people to submit ideas for and we called those vision forums. They were play, work, green future, leading innovation, and home. And you can see that play really dominated interest in terms of website traffic with nearly 37% of traffic, all website traffic going to the play vision forum. The others were fairly evenly divided. As far as devices, we really made the site mobile optimized. We had 27% of our visitors came from mobile devices and 69% from desktop and really just a small portion from tablets. Now, at the beginning of the campaign, we really saw that that was more evenly split between desktop and mobile. And then, we implemented a strategy to put ImagineMesa.com on all of our library computers as the homepage for the desktop browsers and that really made that desktop number shoot up. But what it also did is it exposed the campaign to an audience we may not otherwise have reached. So, we felt like that was a really successful strategy. Additionally, as we look at the age groups of folks who participated in the campaign, the bulk of the traffic did come from 25- to 54-year-olds with that 35- to 44 subgroup as the most active. So, here's a heat map of the participants in Imagine Mesa. So, we got this information from a survey that we included on the website to really understand where people were coming from as they participated. We encouraged people who live, work, and play in Mesa to participate in the Imagine Mesa campaign, but we did see that 85% of the survey respondents did live in Mesa. And as you can see, the red is obviously the most active, so, and then goes down from there. So, Mr. Brady was talking about our overall digital communication strategy and Imagine Mesa really fits into where we're going from here. It's really important for us to, as we ramp up, connect with people, be where they are and establish ongoing relationships and touchpoints with them, inform people about what's going on around the city and provide important information about our services, really promote the story of the city and our community, engage with people and interact with them and help them, and streamline the experience for users and the staff management. It's also important that, to us, that we grow our audience. We currently have, so I mentioned the stats for our main city Facebook page, but we do have 94 social media channels out there right now and that includes 267,000 total social media followers across all of our city department accounts.
Excuse me, Julia.
Sure.
Is it a good, I mean, we are a large organization, lots of departments, lots of different services, so it makes sense that we have multiple social media outlets. But is 94 the right number?
It's a great question, Mayor. So, there's no magic number, but what we're working to, as Mr. Brady alluded to, is just to make sure that what we're doing in the social media space is active and helpful to residents. And when we find something that isn't as active or isn't getting the response that we'd like to, to really move our efforts in a different direction.
So, Mayor, we're able to evaluate now each of those sites and do the analytics. So, before they kind of just were there, now Julia can come and she's providing reports and meeting with the departments to show them what's performing well. And then, we raised the question because we don't want dead wood just sitting out there and not being active. So, this number probably could change in the future, but we're evaluating each one of those.
Julia, thank you for your great job. Are you able to disaggregate some of the data you're collecting in terms of your analytics to see what demographics are watching, what they're using in terms of their media? For example, I would imagine that our, my age group probably uses more Facebook as opposed to the younger millennials perhaps who may use Instagram. And so, are you evaluating that as well in terms of how we distribute information out?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Luna, yes, we are. So, we can see some of those more granular analytics to understand who is interacting with our content and then also to shore up the areas where we may need to reach out to people in other ways. So, for instance, while our Instagram following is small at the moment, that's an area that we're really putting a lot of effort into because we know that Instagram skews younger than some of the other platforms and that's an area where we think that we have room to grow and really educate people a little bit more. So, Imagine Mesa has really helped us with our digital blueprint moving forward. So, we're using tactics that we have honed in the Imagine Mesa campaign in future digital efforts and we will use more of them as we move forward with digital campaigns. So, we have used a combination of our city-owned assets, partners, and external promotion and really upped the amount of collaboration that we have had across departments. Imagine Mesa was promoted on pretty much every one of those 94 social media channels and so, we're looking for, in the future, big campaigns to do something similar. We also had very concerted effort around Spanish language outreach and we saw a great result from that. As far as our digital ad campaign went, that was our most popular ad set. We had a great reaction, positive reaction to those ads. And so, from that, we are working on a strategy specific to our Mesa Hispanic speakers on social media moving forward. We also learned a lot about Nextdoor and Nextdoor, obviously, is a neighborhood app. We have 40,000 residents in Mesa who are on Nextdoor. We saw a really great response from Nextdoor in terms of the web traffic generated to Imagine Mesa. And so, we're expanding our Nextdoor usage to various departments that may be able to put information out on Nextdoor directly to residents we may not reach on other channels. We also implemented robust tracking and analytics that we have never used before. So, we use something called Google UTM codes and that's something that we'll look to use in future campaigns as well that really gave us enhanced data on who is coming to the website. We also worked hard to have a visual branding and we did work with a consultant to develop the visual branding for the campaign and it was well-received. And it's something that, as we move forward in the digital and social media space, we know that it's important to have a really distinct visual look so that people know that what they're getting is high-quality information and that it's coming directly from the city.
All right. So, now that we have all of this information, the task at hand is what do we do with it? So, the Imagine Mesa Advisory Committee's been tasked with that. That's a 15-member advisory committee. Their job is to evaluate and prioritize these, each one of these ideas. We have over 465 ideas. Each of these were looked at and evaluated and are currently in the process of being... in the process of being evaluated and in an effort to come back to the City Council in December with their recommendations of those ideas that should proceed forward. As we moved forward, the subcommittee or the committee has been meeting since August. In August and September, what we did was we meet, we met, we provided them the background of the campaign. We came up with a methodology for actually reviewing all of these ideas. With that methodology, the committee came up with success factors that they could take into account as they reviewed each one of these ideas. These success factors included things of, does the city have existing programs? What are some of those things that the city has that are strengths as far as infrastructure or property that might help this idea advance? Is there good public support? This is where the me-tos came in and all those thousands of people who came in and reviewed those ideas that were submitted. As we did that, we, the committee realized that as they look at this as a whole, they needed to break up into subcommittees. What they did was they then took each of those individual forums that are out there, the Work and Innovation Forum. Work and Innovation were separate forums, but they combined them because they had a lot of related ideas. The Green Future Subcommittee, the At Home Subcommittee, and the At Play Subcommittee. As they went through and they divided these up and they, the subcommittees in the month of October and November, there's a subcommittee meetings tonight. This group of individuals have been very diligent and dedicated in getting into the ideas themselves. We coordinated presentations and information from staff, from the idea of submitters themselves for the subcommittee to really get down into understanding these ideas in order to provide you the best value, list of ideas and an evaluation and summary. So, where we're going with this, the subcommittee will meet through the month of November. Their goal is to get back in front of the City Council to make a presentation to you with a summary of those ideas that they think should move forward in an effort to help you in your strategic planning effort for next year.
Thank you very much. I have a couple of quick questions. I saw on your, I guess, just the general goals, digital communication strategy, one of the strategies is to engage, which is great. So, I think my hope all along has been that Imagine Mesa would, certainly, it's a campaign that has a beginning and a middle and an end and it's going to be over and we're going to learn from it. But the idea of engaging through social media is not something that we want to be over, obviously. So, going forward, talk to me about engagement. Does that just mean that we respond when people post on social media or are we going to continue to be somewhat proactive in throwing out, you know, open-ended questions or is Imagine Mesa over or is some portion of it going to continue on?
Mayor, so, as we move forward, we'll really have a multi-pronged approach. Certainly, engagement is responding and interacting with users as their questions come up, but it is also important for us to solicit ideas from them on a regular basis and also when there are things coming from the city to get their feedback. So, we're looking at an add-on for our content management system that would allow us to do some of that. As projects come up within the city, we can put them out to our residents and get their feedback and do some online polling and that sort of thing. So, we'll be pursuing that effort moving forward.
Great. And I know Mr. Luna has a question, but one more quick question. I think I heard you say that you were impressed with the amount of Spanish language engagement that we had. Do we have numbers, approximately, how, what percentage of our social media interaction is taking place in Spanish or other languages other than English?
So, for the Imagine Mesa campaign, we had 1,700 clicks from our ad campaign, which was the highest of all four of the ad campaigns that we ran. And so, we are looking to improve that number. Certainly, it's not huge at the moment, but as mentioned, we're seeking to move forward with a Spanish-language-specific strategy for our Mesa residents outside of the Imagine Mesa effort.
So, Julia, let's talk about that because that's going to be, that's a significant initiative that we just kind of kicked off this week in discussing what that means. So, we're literally going to take a Facebook page and it's going to be in Spanish now. But we're trying very carefully not to just take it and just say, delicious, translate from English to Spanish, recognizing there's other nuances and cultural nuances that we need to be able to express or maybe create emphasis or priority on when we do that. So, we're working to be able to create a unique Facebook page or that has, not just because it's Spanish language, but it also connects with the Hispanic culture and the way that we would be able to talk about what's happening in the city to get their interest and get their feedback. So, that's an initiative we're taking on right now.
Okay. So, I think you said the response to the Spanish-language advertising was 1,700 clicks. People through that advertising engaging and checking into the Imagine Mesa site, is that right?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Luna?
Thank you, Mayor. You asked my question, but you did a good job. So, that means I can start tweeting in Spanish, right? Whether there's three of us here that can do it.
And the good news, Mayor, the good news, Mayor, Council, is Vice Mayor Luna's been very gracious to allow us to lend us Marissa to help us with this project. So, it's been very helpful.
Yes, Mr. Freeman?
Thank you for doing this. I really appreciate it and also a big thanks to the subcommittees, the 15-member advisory board, because taking their time to do it is phenomenal and especially with all the analytics and the statistics you have, I think that's really important. And then, the next step is implementation and taking all that because it's going to affect all of us within the city and I really appreciate all the work. I was just wondering, how's the interface with all the departments? How are you connecting all the different departments together to get this information from them to the public?
So, to the public? Well, let me start with interfacing with the committee itself. There are two department liaisons that are embedded in with those subcommittees to coordinate that information. Each of these subcommittees has expressed a desire of how can they get back their appreciation or feedback to some of these ideas. Some of the ideas that they may not be recommending to advance forward, they still want to give feedback on that the idea was interesting or that the city has these programs that are already in place that would assist them in these ideas. And so, we're currently working on those ways of getting that feedback, but the, all of the departments have participated very well throughout the whole evaluation process.
Thank you. Thank you. Additional questions? So, we'll look, so on December, first week of December, will we have you folks back or at that point is that when the Imagine Mesa Committee becomes forward or you're going to...
Probably our co-chairs, Terry Benelli and Levi. What's Levi's name?
Ava.
Ava. Okay. Great. Well, we'll look forward to that. Thank you again. Let me second what others have said. Thank you for the good work that you've done and for our 15-member citizen committee as well. Thank you. Next item on our agenda, excuse me, is to hear a presentation and provide direction on the Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities Department's five-year strategic plan. Mr. Hirschberg, welcome. And these are the great contractors that came in. I think we've spent some time with these nice ladies. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Council. Mark Hirschberg, Director, Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities. With me today, to my left, is Jamie Sabach, President of 110% Incorporated, which led the strategic planning efforts with us. And Kristin Dar was central creative to my right, who was, helped us out with the community engagement piece of the strategic plan process. The nice part, as you heard with Imagine Mesa, with these projects running simultaneously, and this is much like Imagine Mesa, this was an initiative that we discussed last year as part of our budget process of how to get feedback and determine the best model of our service delivery and where we're going. So, with Imagine Mesa running simultaneously and that really provided the what people want, this allowed us to focus on the hows and whys we deliver what we do and the services we provide and those models. So, worked well going, having those projects run simultaneously. With that, we've been focused on engaging the community for a number of months, starting with you all in early January. And at this point, I'll pass it over to Jamie and kind of let her run through the background and the process of where we are at and then share that with you as we move forward.
Good morning. As Mark mentioned, the organization embarked upon a strategic plan and although that sounds like anything any organization would do, it's quite an ambitious project. The strategic plan for this organization is certainly a challenge because of the size, the depth, and the breadth of this organization. It's a rather extensive park and rec system. Obviously, with the addition of community facilities, it makes it quite a large organization. The one thing that was a commitment made on behalf of this organization was not only to create strategies and goals, but to get into the detail concerning how were they going to see the goals come to life, what actions would be employed over the course of the five years to make sure that there was some movement and continuous improvement on behalf of the organization. So, I just want to say on the front end, first of all, the commitment that Mark and the entire team made to the process was quite commendable and we appreciated all the effort that they made to make the work seamless and to make the work effective. In terms of strategic planning, I'm sure many, if not most, know that strategic planning really starts with an assessment of the organization. This organization spent a lot of time on the front end doing their own self-evaluation, if you will, essentially, who are we as a system? But in addition to that, we got into the weeds concerning what were the conditions that they were facing? What were the things that were happening around them, whether it was demographic shifts in this community, technological impacts, societal interests, changes in trends and issues in public parks and recreation and certainly facility management? So, a lot of different factors and elements that go into thinking about what are the things that are affecting us and then what do we do with those moving forward? And obviously, the charge and the challenge here was to figure out what kind of roadmap would they create over the course of the next five years to react and respond in a positive way to the conditions that they were facing. What has resulted over the course of the last 11 months is a strategic plan that includes four priorities, 16 goals, and 108 actions. And the one thing that I want to make sure that everyone is clear on is these actions are not just tasks. These are actions that are incredibly thoughtful, they connect back to the goals with the fundamental intention being how are they going to impact, resolve, affect the priorities? The other thing I want to mention about these actions is this organization is looking at what's the resource requirement for all of these actions? Is it low? Is it mid? Is it high? Is this something that's going to take in an enormous amount of staff time and energy and resource and money to be able to accomplish or is it something we can do rather quickly? The reason we want to look at resources is simply so that we balance the scorecard, if you will. If we have a lot of actions and a lot of ambition in here that requires a lot of time and a lot of attention and a lot of money, the reality is it'll probably be very difficult for them to be able to accomplish over five years. So, we wanted to make sure that we had some of those solid, easier wins, at the same time have those things that were rather ambitious, that were going to have big impacts on the As a, I'll say, a foundation to this process, there was quite an extensive stakeholder engagement component to this, as you would hope there would be with any strategic planning effort in the public sector. I'm going to speak to the staff component of this and then I'm going to turn it over to Kristin and she can get into the details concerning the public participation. But the one thing I want to mention on the front end is we had a FaceTime with each of the full-time staff members for over 15 hours each. We did a, we facilitated a number of workshops, work sessions. They were actually involved in focus group meetings. As we see it, certainly, nobody understands the system better than the folks doing the good work, as they say. So, we made an effort to make sure we engaged the staff to the fullest extent we could. And then, in addition to that, we also had a couple of touchpoints with the board along the way. They were actively involved on the front end as representatives of the community and we wanted to make sure that they were engaged throughout the process, giving them updates on progress, getting their feedback, their perspectives and opinions on the organization and where they thought it should head.
The staff, can you hear me? Okay. The staff workshops were really amazing. I mean, like Jamie said, this is 15 hours each with over 200 staff members. So, what that means to me is this plan is a really organic plan that has really been written by the department. What's important to enhance that staff perspective is, first of all, I met with all of you, except for you, councilmen, early this year and I went through with each of you individually the same questions that we were posing to the staff. In addition, we did 11 community focus groups in February. That included user groups like softball, baseball, swimming, golf, and even the hobbyists who fly the remote-controlled planes in your parks, volunteers, city departments, school partners, sponsors, the business community, and a focus group with the youth, which was really neat. That was really a neat experience to talk to the kids. And we got these stakeholders from the department. I mean, they're very active in the community and they do have a lot of touchpoints. But you can see from this slide that we did multiple touchpoints and a variety of touchpoints to help enhance the plan. The statistically valid survey, we got an 8% response to that. And then, we also did do an online public survey, which we pushed out through the stakeholders, asked for their assistance. So, many of them shared it on their personal Facebook page, for example, and we got over 500 responses to that. So, that all played into the themes that we heard. You can go to the next slide. So, this is where you can kind of see the circle slide before where we had four priorities and the 16 goals. So, the four priorities are listed here in the middle or listed on the right. And to the left there, you can see the themes that we heard and they were very, very consistent between all of the different platforms that we used. I'm going to focus on the bottom one, which is about the communication and then let Jamie jump back in on the other ones. A lot of what I heard from the focus groups and from the public that I interacted with was about the awareness. I think people stated that if they knew more about what the department had to offer, they would participate more. So, that gets back to the presentation that you heard earlier, probably, about the digital communication and your digital strategy will be very helpful to help getting the word out about what's available.
So, as Kristin mentioned, the priorities, the four overarching priorities are listed in the colored boxes there to the right. And the important thing is that there's a recognition, again, that these are considered those areas, those areas of emphasis, that if this organization invests the greatest amount of resource, time, and energy, they're going to have the biggest impact on this organization over the next five years. We thought we'd throw out a few of the examples so you could see really how this all rolls up. And the four selected really are all about impact to the community. Obviously, at the end of the day, that's what the intention of this process is really rooted in. So, the first one you see here is referencing the priority, deliver only the highest quality services and experiences. And obviously, we'd always expect that that would be the case, but we like to call it out, we're going to shine a light on it, that this is truly something that is a promise on behalf of this organization. One of the goals that resulted under this priority was fostering creativity and innovation leading to memorable customer experiences. We live in an experience economy today. Folks are more interested in experiences than they tend to be in material items anymore. We're seeing a huge societal shift in this regard. We're seeing a huge societal shift in this regard. So again, the organization wanted to call this out, that there would be a commitment and an expectation that this is how they would do business. And one of the actions that resulted from this, based on the staff's perspectives and the energies they wanted to direct towards satisfying this goal, you see there on the right, when renovating or building, ensuring that the design of spaces and places provides unique and memorable experiences for citizens and visitors. You're seeing this rearing its head in this system already. You look at some of the placecapes you've created that are very different than others in the U.S. So there's already been an established expectation around this. At the same time, again, this was this organization's effort to say, this is what we will continue to do. And it is essentially a promise when you see it here in the document. Another example is in the priority balance needs with wants to stabilize the bottom line. We all know this is quite the challenge today. I would say arguably maybe more so than it's ever been. But one of the goals in this priority is strategic management of our physical assets and inventory. Of course, in a system that has parks, has recreation and community facilities, there's a lot of physical assets and infrastructure within this one organization and the system. So this is truly a priority for the department. And one of the actions that resulted out of this particular goal was develop a comprehensive asset management plan and strategy. And as I mentioned earlier, this is one of those things that's going to take, frankly, at least three to five years to develop a comprehensive strategy for the system. So this will be one that we consider to be a heavy lifting item. It's one that's going to require a lot of staff time and a lot of energy to complete because, again, of the extensive nature of this department. I'll let you do that. Another goal in this priority is investing in long-range planning. An action here is dedicating resources to the development of a comprehensive Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So this is about land acquisition, land development, how's this organization going to operate, what kind of roadmap would you like to see for this system moving forward? And then finally, another example we wanted to share is in the priority, build strength through community connections and relationships. Goal 4B is focus on community outreach and education. And one of the actions here is developing a comprehensive and streamlined department marketing and communications plan. And as Kristin mentioned, this was a theme that we heard quite loudly from both staff as well as community members, that they really wanted to think, they wanted to be thoughtful about how they were going to communicate and connect with the community members and the customers and the visitors that are the recipients, essentially, of the services of this organization. And finally, we thought it would be wise to give you really our sense of what we thought the most critical issues for this organization are moving forward. And, you know, pardon the fun little graphic there about shining a light, if you will, or magnifying these. But again, these we see as those critical issues that this organization really has some challenges around, and at the same time has made a commitment to impact and effect over the next three to five years. Health, of course, of the system, relevance. Today, we're seeing significant changes in what people want to do in their leisure time. Parks and Recreation is evolving at a rate that it's never evolved at over its history. Asset management, we've already touched on that, long-range planning, financial sustainability of the system. Obviously, this is a legacy plan, as we see it in a lot of ways, is what is this organization going to look like for the next generations? And then finally, just the importance of community engagement, making sure folks know what's happening, certainly, but they're a part of the system. They help develop the system, they help drive the decisions of the organization.
So with that, Mayor and Council, our next steps, we spent last night reviewing this same presentation with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, who's been involved in this process since the very beginning. Over the last few weeks, our staff internally has been working on developing outcomes for each of those 108 actions, so that we have something to move forward, as well as assigning staff to various teams and identifying leads to work on each of these action steps, moving us forward. We talked about, Jamie mentioned, identifying the resources required for each action. And then as those break down into each year of our timeline to accomplish each of those action steps, we'll create annual work plans to help guide us and keep us on track of that. And then we'll continue to make this the forefront of our activity as a staff and bring our entire staff together on a quarterly basis and have the leads of each of those teams that are assigned to those actions report on their progress to make sure we're keeping our promise to the community, as Jamie mentioned, and putting those down in writing to move this organization forward. With that, be happy to answer any questions or comments you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you for that wonderful presentation and those wonderful slides, by the way, that were great. Are you incorporating some of the ideas, will you incorporate some of the ideas that we've obtained from the Imagine Mesa initiative? Is that something that you're going to mesh together? Tell me how you're going to do that.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, as Councilmember Freeman asked that question about the engagement with staff, our staff has been, myself and our management assistant, Amy Manis, has been at each of the subcommittee meetings. So we've been working with them and providing them information and answering their questions about the ideas that were submitted through Imagine Mesa. Ironically, as we've had those conversations, a lot of what you're seeing in our, through our staff conversations, through our own surveys that we provided, as well as the community engagement and the Imagine Mesa, everything is starting to kind of align into these same kind of buckets of how you do that and how you move forward. So I think, as I mentioned at the beginning, it's a nice compliment to see how that all fits together. And then as we do that, I think what you'll see is, moving forward, a lot of these action steps will drive our budget requests and our needs in the future to make sure we're aligning with all of those efforts.
Items is developing a marketing and communications plan. I assume that the Julia and the digital assets that will not have silos where we have a Parks and Rec communication plan, and the left hand doesn't necessarily know what other right hands we have in the city are doing. A lot of what you are doing is stuff that I think we'd like to bootstrap other city activities to, because you got the cool, interesting stuff that people want to do. And so anyway, I'm sure I'm preaching to the choir, I see heads nodding.
Mayor, just, I think you've raised that question a few times. And I think what we've done in Julia and the PIO staff, and then all department PIOs that are involved in their marketing for their departments, meet each Monday. And so that's where hopefully that coordination and collaboration is taking place about the right hand and the left hand knowing what's going on, so that, one, all the departments know what the specific strategy or theme that we may be working on together as a city may be for the coming month. But then they are also bringing to the table a discussion about an initiative or a project that's important to them, so that there's hopefully, and we are, this is a continuous improvement effort, working together as a city in all those departments to share that information. But there is an opportunity, and we keep telling, reminding the departments, they need to be part of this conversation each Monday. The PIOs meet together with Julia and Steve Wright and his staff to have these discussions.
And Mayor, Mr. Brady, to that point, we even go beyond that, and our staff has met with Julia countless times of how do we improve, where do we go, how do we do better at this? So we, as soon as we started hearing those themes, we didn't sit waiting for a plan to be put together, we started working on a lot of these initiatives right away and putting it in place, so we could start the ball rolling. So yes, we're truly focused on that, and Julie and our, the PIO office has been a tremendous help to us, and recognizing that outreach that we have with the community, it's important to continue to deliver that message.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you for what you're doing, Mark, and staff, and I appreciate that. Excuse me. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to go on a lunch date with my granddaughter at Hermosa Vista School, and I was in the neighborhood of the mayor across the street. But while I was there, I was talking to some moms about how our parks are doing and what they enjoy about them, and they all said, we love Riverview, we go to Riverview Park all the time. And I think that set a great template for our community. Then I told them about Pioneer Park, that's future renovation and what it'll be, as well as Eagles Park. And they were so excited about that. So what I'm saying is we're building the future for the next generation. These parks are going to last for many years. And so I think we have to look, as you're doing, out of the box, visionary, and, you know, you talked about land acquisitions and things to make our community better in certain pockets of our areas in our respective districts. So I appreciate all you're doing. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Glover.
Thank you, Mark, for all the work that you and your staff do. When you talk about a focus on fiscal responsibility with balancing the needs and wants for our community, have you examined what other communities have done to support their Parks Departments in regards to funding sources?
Mayor, Councilmember Glover, yeah, we're continually looking at those ideas and having those conversations. Obviously, each locale is different, and each state has different laws. In Arizona, we're pretty much, you know, following the same standard as other communities. But we continue to look at different concepts and ideas, and if we find one that would stick and possibly work in this community and for this community and state, I present those to Carrie and Chris on a regular basis and have those conversations with our budget office as well.
Well, because I think that it would be very important for our community to have a dedicated funding source for our Parks and Rec Department, because how often have we heard that, ever since the park bond in 2012, that we're able to build them, but it's the O and M that really takes a hit? And so how can we continue building without having funding to maintain them as well? So I would urge you and your staff to look at what other communities from around the country have done, to try to find some type of dedicated funding source that they've used, so that we can implement it here in Mesa as well.
Thank you, Councilmember.
I'm sorry, another question popped in my head while we were sitting there.
No problem.
So we did the Parks and Rec Needs Assessment, and I've heard multiple times over the last few months that we are behind when it comes to lighted ball fields. We have a, maybe, I've heard the statistic, maybe 1,000 hours a week deficit between the demand and the supply of ball fields for practice for Pop Warner and soccer, and you know, a long list of different youth sports and then adult sports. Did we get into the weeds on those types of things in this assessment and say, here's how many fields we're behind, or here's how many hours more of lighted practice opportunities we need? Or was that, is that a little too far into the weeds?
Mayor, that's a little too far into the weeds for this type of plan. That would be something that's more focused in a long-range master plan. However, we do, as staff, have that data available of what those needs look like. We've obviously had that conversation a number of times about what that looks like and that demand, and your numbers are fairly accurate in there of that Monday through Friday need for practice. And we've, again, even through the Imagine Mesa's committee and Kristin's conversations with the focus groups, that's something she heard on a regular basis and continued to remind us of, of that need. And even in the Imagine Mesa Subcommittee, there were several questions regarding that proposed concept that was out there for the youth and amateur sports complex and what that looks like and those needs for fields.
So when it comes time for us to consider another park bond or to allocate funds, I think we're going to need to have that type of data as well, isn't it? We're X number of, particularly, I'm thinking, you know, in the southeast part of Mesa, where we've got all these new young families that are moving in, it seems like we have a deficit in terms of soccer fields. And I know there's opportunities around the water treatment plant or others, but we're going to have to at some point get into the weeds and say, yeah, we're going to address that. I was, congratulations to the folks who live in southeast Mesa on the, there was a park noise, school bond proposal that passed two nights ago. Part of that, Queen Creek, Queen Creek Public Schools, which is south of, I mean, Eastmark, Cadence, all that part of Mesa.
And building a high school.
Exactly. And I think we have talked with them about co-locating a swimming pool at the Queen Creek High School. So that tees up, I think, for us the need to address how we would pay for that. So that's great that we're looking at it at a high level, but obviously, we're going to have to come down and figure.
Mayor, you're right. I think after we get the report from the committee in December, then our schedule is to start working with the council at the beginning of next year to begin kind of defining projects and at least identifying the needs, and then we can work with council on trying to scope out those projects that we might want to move forward for future, either our strategic budget funding or for possibly for a future bond election. So we would have the opportunity to have that discussion early next year.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate your great work on that. The next item on our agenda is to hear a presentation and provide direction on an update of the funding options for a proposed solar parasol project at the Mesa Arts Center. Mr. Freeman is really looking forward to this presentation. I think he could give it, actually, to it. Welcome.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. I'm Scott Boucher, the Director of Environmental Management and Sustainability, and I'm joined today by Cindy Ornstein, our Arts and Cultural Director, Frank McCray from our Director of Energy Resources, and Mr. Tony Kudoren, also with Energy Resources. Just to give you a quick update or reminder of what we're discussing, this is a proposed solar project at the Mesa Arts Center. This is a project that would produce locally generated energy and also create an additional event space for the Arts Center. Just to give you an idea of how we got here, there was an RFQ process that we did back in 2015. This would be our second RFQ that we've done. We had previously done an RFQ in 2012, in which we had contracted with Solar City to do some solar projects similar to what we're proposing here, some carport, standard carport structures, though, at five different locations in the city. We narrowed down, so as we selected the vendors, we narrowed down the sites that we were looking at and focused really in on the Arts Center, with the idea being that this was a project that had multiple benefits associated with it. Really, what we see is that it's three projects in one. It is a project that will create shaded parking and an event space for the Arts Center, so a place where they'll be able to program in events. In addition to that, it produces local solar energy for our electric service area, and it will have additional event features associated with it, such as lighting and ability to hang, you know, use it as rigging for larger events that the Arts Center would be able to hold at this location. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Cindy, so she can describe for you a little bit the venue that would be created at the Mac.
So we wanted to share that we will be looking at this as a new venue for placemaking. In addition to the obvious benefit of shaded parking, the higher parasol really does give us that opportunity to create a lively and exciting space for events. The shaded area benefits existing events as well as potential new events. Just this, just a couple of weeks ago, when we had Dia de los Muertos and we had about 20,000 people, there were long lines for the food. People had to stand out in the hot sun. How many people walked away and didn't spend that money because they didn't want to wait in the sun? How many people would have lingered longer if it were a beautiful environment instead of a parking lot where they were going to the food vendors? In addition to the opportunity for us to create additional events, we anticipate there would be demand from the community to, who would want to use this space, because it would be a very inviting environment. We do believe that there is revenue generation opportunity. It's hard to say how much, because we, of course, would be balancing the parking needs with the event needs and needing to make sure we were not taking away a major customer amenity too much of the time, which is the covered parking. But we do believe that we would see a growth in community events and in our own generated events. And there is an opportunity for us to work with Energy Resources to not only recognize what they're doing, but to help engage the community around the idea of solar energy and the benefits of it to our, to our community.
So during our last discussion, one of the main questions that came out was ownership versus doing what's called a power purchase agreement. And really, we had some conversations about the cost associated with both, whether it's the cost associated with a purchase and the cost associated with a power purchase agreement. This chart here shows you, and it's the net present value over 25 years, which would be the term of a power purchase agreement, which was what we had proposed the last time we were here. And it shows you that the two, that the cost associated with either model that we would use to deliver the structure is very similar over that 25-year period, with the ownership model costing just a little bit more over that 25-year period. I will say that the O and M is an estimate associated with what the operations and maintenance would be, because, you know, we don't know exactly if panels are going to fail at some point or if inverters are going to fail. We know that some will, it's just when and how many will at those points, that we're putting estimates to it. And really, Tony Kudoren with Energy Resources, who's here today, has done a great job in making those estimates. We've used some models that were available from like the Natural Resources Energy Lab and different places that have models that you make assumptions over that period of time for a system like this. One of the things is with the energy payments, I will say with the cost comparison, if, if the, if the structure does not produce energy, we don't pay for anything then in the PPA model. So in other words, if there is an inverter that fails or if there are issues with the solar panels and it's not producing energy, the, the city is then not paying for, is not paying the solar contractor, AMRESCO, because we only pay for kilowatt-hours that are produced. So with that, we're going to go into some, some details about the different options that we had presented. We'll have three different options that we're presenting and give you the pros and cons associated with those. So option one is what's called, again, a power purchase agreement or PPA. Many people refer to it as, a lot of folks would refer to it as, as a public-private partnership where we're working with AMRESCO on this project. And we have negotiated, I want to make sure that we point out, we have negotiated that there's buyouts throughout the contract. So you would have a buyout at year six, 10, 15, 20, and 25. And those have been negotiated with AMRESCO as we've been going through this process.
Excuse me, Mr. Freeman.
Sorry to interrupt, Scott. Is there some type of value for these fair market values, six, 10, and 25, like a depreciation schedule or value of those structures? You know, if we, if there was a buyout?
Yeah, no, we asked, there are pre, sorry, pre-negotiated that.
Yes. So we've been, we've been working with AMRESCO over that time. I will say, we haven't finalized all of the details associated with the PPA. We're still negotiating. But last night, I did get values from them, literally at, at seven o'clock last night, because I've been asking, because you've, you've had these questions, I got those values associated with it. And they range anywhere at year six of $1.3 million, and it goes down at year 25, it would be $119,000. So with that, and so just to let you know with the power purchase agreement, it, AMRESCO would design, they would own, they would operate and maintain the structure. And again, the city would pay for the energy that is produced from it. Some of the pros associated with that is that we don't have that operation and maintenance cost. Listening to the conversation that we just, you were just having associated with, with the parks and you can build it, but then you must maintain it, it would be similar with this if we owned the structure and that we would have to maintain the structure. Whereas with AMRESCO, all of the solar components associated with it, they are responsible for that maintenance because if it doesn't produce, again, we don't pay for it. It is a little bit less expensive and it does allow AMRESCO to capitalize on some tax benefits that get passed through to us. That's why you could see that that cost is lower on, on the PPA side. In addition to that, it preserves the capital that we have for other projects that we may want to do. And again, it gives that event space that the Arts Center is lacking in the, the parking lot, and it gives that shaded parking. And I'll say from our other projects that we've done with SolarCity, where we have it either at police stations, the library, at Red Mountain, the multi-gen station or multi-generational, it, we get a lot of feedback from the residents that they love the shade. It's just, it's Arizona, people parking in the shade. Parking in the shade is much nicer than parking in the sun. And so, you know, we even see, if you go to the multi-gen center, especially in the, in the summertime, you'll see people are parked farther away just so that they're in the shade. So they're willing to walk a little bit further just because they're in the shade and they know when they get in their car, it's going to be more comfortable. So some of the cons associated with it is that we do, we, we don't, we don't necessarily have operational control, so that can be a con associated with it. But I think with the contract, the way that it's structured, that we only pay for the energy that, that helps with that. And then after the 25-year period, we would have the option of purchasing at fair market value, which we've discussed is about $119,000, it's what's programmed in, in the contract, or AMRESCO, if it's something that we did not want at that point, AMRESCO would have to remove it and, and put the site back to its original condition. With that, we'll get into option two, which focuses more on the purchase option and use of utility bonds, and I'll turn it over to Tony Kudoren.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Tony Kudoren with Energy Resources. So I'll be going over the second option that we looked at for purchasing the project. So if we went with the option of ownership, we'd need to rebid the, the entire project with our qualified vendors to use Title 34 Design/Build Criteria. The winner would design, construct, and test the project, and then we'd receive all the energy from the project, and we'd have to either maintain it ourselves or contract with a third-party O and M provider to maintain the system.
That's, that's a big, significant difference. We'd be issuing debt to pay for this. We'd have to use an authorization of electric utility bonds that we've not issued for this purpose, obviously. It's intended mostly for infrastructure related to undergrounding utilities, maybe substation improvements, expansions. We believe it would be an eligible expense under the current bond authorization, but it would be more additional debt on our books because we would be issuing bonds to pay for the structure.
Thank you. Mr. Luna.
Thank you. But in terms of the aesthetics, the parasols and stuff, we wouldn't be able to replicate that. Is that correct?
Well, with this option, the vendor would actually be building it, so they would be responsible for creating the aesthetics that we, we request.
We could request, and, and as we, to make sure it's clear, because of the height of the parasol, in order to get cars underneath it and to have it work as a venue for the MAC, by the patent that exists, we're going to be, and this is where it gets a little complicated, we will have someone build it, but it's going to be built by the same company.
Same vendor, yes.
So we're kind of in this, it's not as competitive a process as you would think, just because once you go above 20 feet, certain.
Yeah, 20, I think it's 20, 24 feet.
24 feet, you are required to use this one contractor. And we've already been put on notice by their law firm, who's watching us. So, so as far as the delivery of the structure, the parasol, we don't think it would be materially different, what we would get. The risk would be, we would be at risk for any increased escalation in construction cost and what that would be. And we're seeing a lot of that now versus the risk for that today or under the first option would be completely to the vendor. They would have to absorb all that as part of their project.
So would we be responsible for the maintenance of it as well?
Under the first option, no. On the second option, yes.
Okay, so we would have to, I don't know, do you have sufficient staff to do that? And do we have personnel that would be able to deal with that? And we'd also, would we be responsible for maintaining the solar panels as well?
We would either need to develop staff expertise to take on those responsibilities or more likely, we would engage in third-party to perform that operation maintenance, going through a competitive procurement process in order to find those services.
So with proposal one, they would take care of everything?
Correct.
We wouldn't have to deal with any of that?
That's correct.
Okay.
Excuse me, to, to the issue of developing that expertise, it, it seems like solar energy has come down in terms of cost, where, you know, it might have been cost prohibitive over the last few years, or it, we could certainly buy less expensive energy than, than green energy. But it seems like I've heard technology is advancing and that the cost of producing solar energy is more competitive than it once was, leading to, and, and obviously, there's, last night I was at the Mayor's Youth Committee, and several of the questions evolved around green energy or, or it's a kind of a topic that comes up every time I talk with young people. So I guess, long, long-winded question, but are, are we going to, as a city, as an electric utility, over the next few years, likely going to need to develop the expertise to manage solar energy production or not? Is it something that going forward, we're likely to buy from contract?
And maybe, let's give an, let's go through those options we were talking about earlier today. It depends, Mayor. If you want to purchase it just off the market solar that's being produced in Gila River?
Gila Bend.
Gila Bend. Or do you want to do, what we've kind of used, this is a model of locally sourced solar and an opportunity to have mutual benefits. So let's, maybe you can talk about, because we've been out, we're in the market today purchasing sustainable energy. So maybe give us a kind of that, those different tiers and what those costs are and how this compares with those costs on the solar market today.
So in, in August, we issued what we call a request for indicative offers, and these are not any kind of firm commitments for anybody to sell and enter into a contract to sell its power. So we, and we were very flexible in terms of what type of project might be proposed. So many of these projects are, are not yet built, they're in the conceptual planning stages for them. And so, one of the offers came in at around three cents a kilowatt-hour. It's remotely located, so there's probably at least 50 miles of transmission that needs to be acquired and provided either by us or by the project developer to deliver it to our electric system. So that cost comes in around three cents a kilowatt-hour. That would be a fixed price over a term of 20 to 25 years. The prices of those types of projects, one more locally, more closely located to our system, just basically on the other side of our, our boundary with SRP, was in the eight cents per kilowatt-hour range once we started adding into the cost of transmission and getting it delivered into our system. So that range was somewhere between three and eight cents a kilowatt-hour. And that's why we felt comfortable that allocating seven and a quarter cents of this project's cost as a form of green renewable energy for our customers to pay for, we felt comfortable with that. In, in terms of solar energy cost, we have a slide in the back, it's slide 23, and I apologize for it not having a number at the bottom, but it talks about how solar costs were at one time, in 1977, they were $76 per watt, and today they're 50 cents per watt. And so clearly, costs are coming down, technology is improving, inverters are more reliable and more efficient. Each time you convert from solar direct current to the alternating current that we use on a system, you have to transform that. Each time you transform energy, you have a, a little bit of loss of the energy. So, but all of those technologies are improving over time, and they're bringing the cost down. Right now, we have about 20% of our energy supply is met with carbon-free hydroelectric resources. So we're already a very green energy utility, and, and we feel like this is one of the first steps we can take to really enhancing the green energy in our portfolio without imposing a huge price burden or a huge risk on the part of our customers. In terms of building up the expertise to, to manage a solar project as an owner, I, I don't think it's rocket science per se, but it is, could be somewhat of a labor-intensive type operation. But Mayor and Council, we're really good at buying power. We, we buy 325 million kilowatt-hours a year, and we do a really good job at our costs have come down dramatically over the last 15 years. And that's what's made the difference between our rates being higher than SRP to now they're being substantively lower than SRP. And so we're really good at being that part of the organization where we own the transmission line that we have in our service area, we own the distribution system, but we contract out for 100% of our power supplies right now. And we've got 20% of it green, and the other parts of it are very, very low-cost energy. And that's what's helped, allowed us to keep our rates low and stabilize our rates, and this would be one of those types of projects that allows us to continue to do that.
Great. So I, I don't know if it's time for us to draw conclusions, but here's the, the snippets that I think, that I'm at. I don't, I, I appreciate and endorse the, the trend towards renewable energy, but based on what I just heard you say, I'm not sure that we need to necessarily plan on being in the energy production business, that it's okay for us to, to buy electricity on the market and that those costs are coming down, and if we can avoid the, all the fixed costs and all the uncertainty of, of shifting into being a solar energy manufacturer, you know, producer, then, then that's okay with me. I know there's, there are some institutions like ASU, our, our neighbor to the west, that have some very aspirational goals about the amount of solar energy that they're going to use, but I think they're doing it through contractors. They're not taking on the responsibility of owning and operating those facilities themselves. So I, I think, so I'm, I'm comfortable with not owning it just for the sake of starting our own green energy company. I assume that on this particular project, if we did rebid it with the notion that we would own it, that it's a lot more expensive for us to build something than it is for others, because we have to go through all the procurement.
It's the Title 34 requirement.
Title 34. So I guess that's, I, I think we'd be, we'd find that if we were to build this, we'd be building it at a much more costly budget than, than, than the opposite. And then I guess my, also the observation I'd, I'd make is that this is, it, this is, we're not building a solar energy field, that there's a lot cheaper ways to produce solar energy. If we were to go out into the desert and buy 25 acres and, and we could, that's a lot less expensive. What this is, is a venue for our Performing Arts Center, and we're just doing a twofer by throwing some solar panels up on top because they're attractive, they're interesting, it sends a message to our community that we care about being sustainable. So I'm, all of those things being said, I, I'm comfortable with the original proposal of having this be a venue and having it be something that, that, that we don't look at, we don't scrutinize the numbers of whether or not we can produce or manufacture or buy solar energy more efficiently another way. But I do still have a couple of questions, and Cindy, I think they're for you. Have we considered some sort of misting system attached to this? That might be a horrible idea, or it might prolong the useful life of it for a month or two into the hot weather.
We haven't discussed that, so that would be something we could look at. It would obviously require the, the water feed, and we'd have to determine whether it affected maintenance or any issues with the metal, so that would have to be a discussion.
Mayor, we've had pretty good success with those portable misters that we've brought in for the Freedom Celebration. Those have actually been, they're rentals, and so, and they've been pretty effective, at least the ones I've stood in front of. So that may be one option, but we can look at maybe building something in, so.
Wouldn't surprise me if that's a lot better option. And then my last question, whenever I go to the MAC, or particularly when there's an event, parking is an issue. And this parking lot is a very valuable asset. People, it's, it's highly utilized, there's frequently, there's every single parking space in this lot is gone. If we eliminate that by turning it into a venue, are we going to be forcing people into the residential neighborhoods to park on the street? Or, or is the parking structure going to need to be modified for more capacity?
So one of the discussions we've had is that this will require a balancing act, and, and clearly, people want their parking. I mean, as it is periodically when we have events, part of the parking lot is closed, like we did for Dia de los Muertos, because we simply need that extra space to accommodate all the amenities like the food for the event. So we'd have to be very circumspect in our choice about dates for use of it for events. We'd have to look at what, what's going on at the rest of the campus and what the demand is. There is a fair amount of parking all the way around us, and the church is a wonderful partner in allowing us to use their parking lot across the street. So it will be a matter of calendaring and assessing what the demand is in terms of scheduling any additional events. I think we're talking about a handful of additional events we generate, but also being able to respond to community groups that want to use the space, that might be willing to use it at lower peak times when we don't have as much activity going on during the day on a weekend, for instance, before the evening performances. So I think it's going to be a matter of planning and assessing that balance.
Okay. Thank you. I'm, I'm supportive of the project going forward as something that we contract out as opposed to owning it ourselves.
Mayor, just real quick, I just want to make sure Councils understand, we want to make sure we give Council that flexibility so that if we make the decision to go for that option, but we, that's why we were, we heard that there was some concerns about the possibility of ownership. So we've negotiated in those terms that if we want, six years from now, 10, 15, whatever, we can, we can come back to Council and say, here's how it's performing, here's how it's doing, here's how much that would cost, and at least raise the opportunity for the discussion again about maybe we, at that point, for another reason, we may want to purchase it. So we've built that into, I just want to make that clear, we have given ourselves that option. We're trying not to make this just one or the other, so.
So five, 10, 15 years down the road, if we are frankly.
The technologies change, where.
Technologies change, or we're very comfortable operating solar because.
Maybe we've started doing more of that.
We've evolved in that direction, then we have.
We have that option, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Luna, then Mr. Freeman.
Thank you for that proposal. I'm very supportive of it. I appreciate that P3 partnership. I think this is something that I advocate for. But I think the potential, the programming, I, you know, I happened to be at the Dia de los Muertos, there was 20,000 people out there, and it was very, very warm. To have that canopy out there for, for the food trucks or whatever, I think that's a great idea. But think of the programming potential it brings. We could do like a Christmas Kinder Market, if you will, during the holidays. That's going to bring a lot of people in the community. And so I don't know if we can quantify the, the marketing potential that has. marketing potential that has, that's going to bring, but I think having that amenity and that flexibility is going to be very positive for our community. So I'm very supportive. I think it's a great idea, and I can hardly wait to see it.
Mr. Freeman, we're all anxious to hear your thoughts on this. At least I am.
Well, I think both sides have burned a lot of kilowatt-hours on that.
[laughter]
Sorry, Frank.
We did it as efficiently as we could, though. And 20% of it moves greens.
I agree. I appreciate that. No, we've had some robust discussions, and I appreciate staff for spending the time, because sometimes it takes me a little while to wrap around it, and some of my thoughts are. And just so you know, these components, we talk about the inverters, the solar panels, they're all warranted. You know, they're 25-year, 10 to 20-year, maybe on the inverters. The operation and maintenance component, I would prefer a locally-owned facility and structure. That's my opinion. We can come out and get an operation and maintenance agreement. I was doing some of the math in your costs there. Over a 25-year period, it's about $7,700 a year for the operation and maintenance for someone to manage the system. Now, that's not to repair and put the solar on, I know on the inverters, but those are warranted. You can outsource that. We do it throughout the city all the time. Let me look at my notes here. Bonding, I know bonding is an issue that we haven't prepared, and you brought that up. On Slide 12, it talks about MESA, an option to purchase the utility with bonds. Mesa will own the solar structure and exempt from property tax. My question, is there any value to that exemption on property tax?
It's, it just doesn't...
Yeah, they...
Not really much.
It's kind of a hanging issue, that there was a change from the Department of Revenue in how they interpreted some of the law associated with these power purchase agreements, and saying that the, because it's owned by a private entity, that it was a taxable structure, that you'd have to pay taxes on the value of that structure. Solar City actually sued the state on that, saying that it was, their interpretation was wrong, and Solar City won on that. So it's just one of those issues that is, it kind of hangs out there in regards to property tax, but what we're doing in the PPA is trying to mitigate that risk and share that risk going forward with Amoresco, if in fact, it would ever raise itself back up. But as of today, any of the structures that are at the other facilities, there is no property tax on those.
Okay.
And I just want to clear the air. You know, I appreciate all you've done. Go ahead.
I just had Councilmember Freeman bill table from the city attorney's office. That issue about taxability, it's actually pending at the Arizona Supreme Court, or at least it was a couple of weeks ago. I hadn't checked today. But, so, the state has asked the Supreme Court to, you know, revisit this issue about taxability. But up to that point, as Scott mentioned, Solar City has prevailed.
Okay, thank you. And I just want the Council to know, I know Frank's discussed this, but you can go out and buy wholesale solar power today at, like you said, 20 or 25-year increments at a low rate, whatever it is. And we would have no skin in the game except the transmission component and getting that power here to your electrical customers. So that's kind of where I'm thinking, well, even though I don't really agree with the PPA and how it's designed, I understand they take all the risks for it. However, I think that as a city, we should look forward in integrating solar in our electrical portfolio or enterprise system, and not being so willing to reach out to these PPAs as a source, because I, we have the skills and expertise within our city to manage them, even if it's a temporary operation and maintenance agreement over a period of time till you get staff on board. That's between you and Mr. Brady. But regardless, I think solar is an important component in our society. Last year, I was at a APPA meeting, and there are communities that are going 100% renewable energy. And I appreciate that we're doing that and looking forward to that. But I think that we should integrate more into our system. I'm not completely satisfied, again, with the PPA. I prefer ownership. That's where I'll probably divide the line at. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Frankie?
On the fair market value in the 6, 10, 15, 20, 25 years, is that on a model of a current price currently, or is there, is there factors that are in play? Because I imagine the information that you have from '77 to now, the cost of solar energy has been reduced quite significantly. Even probably in the last 10 years, that has rapidly decreased because of technology. So is there, is there, based on the, on those years, is that into effect, like, the changes potentially, or is there some, is that part of the discussion there, figuring out the costs, the fixed costs that you're working in the PBA for those years?
So two different things. The rate, and how much we're paying for solar, is a pre-negotiated, guaranteed delivery of power at a specific rate. That's already been negotiated, and that's constant throughout the agreement. The, if, the option to purchase is really driven more by, I'm assuming, probably some kind of depreciation schedule that comes from the company. So they'll look at, and Scott may be explain, so what you see is their cost to build it, and then they just depreciate that value out over years. So it's more based upon what they see as their internal rate of return, and how much that cost them to build it from the beginning. So it's a kind of a de-escalating value.
Correct. And then because there are tax credits associated with it, there's protections against it being what would be referred to as like a sham sale, to where somebody, you know, partners with a nonprofit, partners with a municipality, gets all of the tax credits, and then sells it to them for a price that is so low that it really wasn't ever owned by them, if that makes sense to you. So the IRS does look at what those values are. In order for them to qualify for these investment tax credits, they're looking at the documents that we're providing and making sure that we're within that reasonable of being fair market value. But it is depreciated over time.
Yeah, so when you look at the literature about solar energy, what municipalities are doing, one of the reasons that PPAs are so popular across the country is that as a city, when we build a facility like this, we can't apply for the same incentives that a private company can do. And so this is our way to get some benefit from those by having someone else build it for us. They receive those benefits from the IRS, tax incentives, and then we get the benefit back through the lower costs. So that's, that's kind of a methodology. Again, if once, if we rebuild it ourselves, we're not eligible to receive those benefits, because we don't pay the same kind of taxes that they would be subject to.
Thank you. So I see the way this is agendized is to provide direction. Do you need...
Yeah, Mayor, we just want to make sure, because this, you know, we appreciate the conversation. It's made our proposal better. Our negotiations have refined in the discussions over the last three weeks, so that's been very helpful. We should acknowledge Councilman Whitaker's participation in this also, in helping us with that.
We didn't even get to his slides.
We didn't even get to his slides. And then, oh, and Kevin Thompson's also on the phone, and he's been helping us also. But what our steps, as you can, as you've heard today, we are negotiating the final contract. So what this tells us, if we get the right direction, we will then conclude those negotiations and bring those contracts to Council. Otherwise, if that's not the direction, obviously, we terminate our discussions with them, and we have to restart under the Title 34 requirements.
Okay. Yes. So, Mr. Brady, if we enter a contract with a third party to build the structure, would they be under the same Title 34 restrictions, and then we then, at, say, five years or six years, they're allowed to get the ITCs and the depreciation value out of the project, then we could purchase that from them in like five or six years down the road?
Right.
Same as we would do at the PPA?
Well, let's see.
Well, the PPA...
So the, under the PPA, they are not subject to Title 34?
Correct.
So that's different than if our requirements would be, the bidding requirements and going with the low bids and all that. And so I'm not sure I follow the question after that.
Okay, okay. So if a third party built the structure and the solar, and they wouldn't have to meet the Title 34 requirements...
Correct.
So I guess I'm just dividing the two a little, quite a bit, between the PPA and a private party from building, or to build the structure and the solar. I think we've had this conversation before.
Sure.
Mayor, Council, so where that line is, is so the power purchase agreement, the concept is, is that you're buying power. They build it, and there's options to purchase it, but the focus is on buying power, and that's really the whole nature of it. Once you switch to the concept that what you're building, what you're buying is a building or a structure, then you're falling within Title 34. And so you're trying to find some, something in between what the current, the two current proposals are, and at what point does it switch over to Title 34? You know, the statute's not that clear, so I couldn't tell you exactly at what point, but the concept that they brought is, is one of which is, the focus is on buying the power.
That's the focus.
And so, but once you switch to, whether it's built by the city or built by a third party, if it's owned by the city immediately thereafter, or as it's being built, then it's Title 34.
I guess going back to my, trying to clarify my question then, is if a third party builds the structure, they're not encumbered by the Title 34?
So, so that depends. So in other words...
That's the gray area?
No, so if they, if they, if they're, either, either these scenarios, there's a third party building the structure.
Right.
So almost every, many, many cases, a third party is building the structure or putting in the lines for the city. It's not literally the city, a city employee doing all the construction for city buildings or infrastructure. So whether it's a third-party building or not, is not, is not sort of the key to the question. Is, does the city own it at the end, or is it a third, or is it a different party that owns it at the end of the construction?
Thanks. Thank you. So, Mr. Thompson, did I hear you're on the phone?
Yes, sir, I am, Mayor.
Okay. Let us know if you have any, if you want to weigh in on this, or have any questions.
Okay.
So the consensus, I think I'm feeling, is to go forward with the original proposal, and you'll negotiate those contracts, and then we'll have another...
Purchase agreements, do those, will those come back to Council then?
Yes.
Yes, good. We'll bring those back to Council.
That'll require additional Council.
We'll just confirm all the details that we've talked about today.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, the next item on our, thank you, gentlemen, and Cindy, thank you for your hard work on this.
Thank you.
And we should note that Mr. Whitaker, I know, was very interested in this, and well, I think we've addressed his questions as well.
Okay, our negotiations, we've given that other option.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is information pertaining to current job order contracting projects. Did you see anything on that list that you have questions about, gentlemen? If not, next item on our agenda is Item 3, here are reports on meetings and conferences attended. Yes, Mr. Luna?
We just had a wonderful luncheon with the ambassador from Mexico to the United States yesterday, over with the Arizona-Mexico Commission. It was well-attended, and the emphasis on luncheon was on trade with Arizona, and Mexico continues to be a, one of our largest trading partners. So it was a great event, and the governor was there as well as Dr. Curl. So that's what I did yesterday.
Thank you. I was with you. That was a great event, and Mexican trade, I think, is going to become a bigger and bigger issue in the city of Mesa. So we're looking forward to more conversation about that. Mr. Thompson, are you going to talk about what you did yesterday?
Sure, Mayor. Yesterday, the mayor and I both were lucky enough to attend a constant aviation ribbon-cutting. And so we welcomed one of the fastest-growing MROs in the nation to Mesa, Arizona, to Mesa Gateway Airport.
Yeah. Huge facility, lots of employees. That was a nice addition to the Gateway Airport family. Any other comments? If not, the next item on our agenda is the schedule for future meetings. Mr. Brady?
We have a lot coming up, Mayor and Council. Just a reminder, we, our next study session and council meeting will be Thursday, November 20th. Is that right? No, it's not right. Next Thursday. We're not meeting because of NLC.
Monday, the 20th.
Monday, the 20th. Did I say Thursday? That's what threw me. Monday, the 20th. But we are not meeting, I guess that's why I should be clear, is we're not meeting a week from the next, this next Thursday, because I believe that conflicts with NLC. Is that correct? Okay. But we will then have a council meeting on November 20th.
Okay. So the next two Mondays. Yes, Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, for not reminding me, but thinking about it. But we have our Lehigh Community Meeting tonight.
Oh.
And we have a lot of staff coming. I appreciate everybody who's going to come, because if we're going to meet like two weeks from now, I'll forget that we had that meeting. I want to get it out now.
It was a great meeting, I'm sure.
I'm looking forward to joining you and wearing my new Lehigh belt buckle, so I will be there. Mr. Luna?
And my hat.
And my hat.
This Saturday, we're going to be really busy. We have the Veterans Parade, as well as the US naturalization process. So that's, I think, at 9:30. And also, on Sunday, if you live in the Red Mountain Ranch community, I will be there at the Red Mountain Ranch community party, which is going to be from noon to 4 o'clock.
Thank you. Tomorrow is Veterans Day. Saturday is our Veterans Day Parade, 11 o'clock. It's an amazing parade. The folks who put that on work on it very hard all year long, and there's a huge number of entries, and so that's at 11. And then at 9:30, thank you for reminding us, that we'll have a naturalization ceremony at the Mesa Arts Center. What a, that's a very patriotic, wonderful event. I think everybody would really enjoy going to that at 9:30 on Saturday. Other events, or, yes, I'm sorry.
I don't know if Mr. Brady was going to mention this, but this weekend, we have the Mesa Music Festival.
Actually starts tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Yeah, tomorrow. And it's November 10th and 11th, and there'll be more than 200 bands playing in venues along Main Street, with Randy Jackson being the keynote speaker on Friday night. So we're excited about that.
Mr. Brady, what did we miss?
You guys covered it, it's awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah, you got it.
Another citywide event is Mr. Glover's wedding, of course.
I was going to wait until next week.
That'll be rebroadcast on Channel...
Facebook Live.
Or on social media.
Facebook Live broadcast.
So congratulations to Chris and Trista. We're all, got our fingers crossed.
No rain, right?
That's right, no rain. And then, of course, the granddaddy of all events is tomorrow, I understand, is Mr. John Pombe's 50th birthday. My gosh. Who would have ever... Mr. Pombe, our Assistant City Manager. Mr. Pombe, we're looking forward to your continued growth individually. There you go. There it is. Speechless. First time. All right. The next item on our, we do have an additional item, is that's to convene an executive session for discussion and consultation on negotiations involving the sale, lease, and development of city-owned property for two separate downtown locations. Is there a motion to that?
No.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. We will now convene an executive session.